Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the people of every team just as well.
All right, thank you. A couple technical difficulties getting started. Mr. Rocko, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Galloway.
Yeah.
Mr. Baraski.
Here.
Mr. Dentz.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
I'm here as well.
All right, Mr. Clark, would you like an executive session?
Yes, Mr. Dentz, the board has actually held three executive sessions since our last meeting. The first was on October 27th, where the board consulted with its advisors over a matter regarding potential development within the township. On November 2nd, the board held an executive session to discuss potential litigation and again to consult with its advisors over a potential development matter within the township. And on the 16th, earlier this evening, the board held a executive session to discuss potential litigation and a personnel matter.
All right, thank you. Item number one on our agenda tonight is public comment. Just to remind folks, we won't take public comment on agenda items. We'll take public comment during the agenda item. So, John, is there anyone else for public comment tonight?
Bringing in public comment now.
Mr. Miller.
We have somebody in here now.
Mr. Miller, are you here for the conditional use hearing?
Selco partnerships.
Okay. So he's one of the witnesses for the conditional use hearing, Mr. Dentz. I'm sorry, you were muted.
Well, John, is there anyone for public comment?
Our apologies. We should be bringing in the right person now.
It's like Tony's.
Tony Batiste, Tony, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, first off, again, I would like to ask about the curb for Falsington United Methodist Church because they are planning to have a living nativity this year.
I still don't have an update. Joe Jones, do you have any update on the road program up there in Falsington?
Mr. Chairman, that project is scheduled with the contractor. We were avoiding the Falsington day, and I'm not quite sure exactly when they intend to do that construction. It'll be this season, and I can reach out to Ms. Batiste and make sure that we're clear and out of there before the living nativity.
That would be great. Thank you. I know you just said that you're not going to have any public comment on the three agenda items. Two of them did say what they're about, so I can kind of guess that. The third one on Gavin, I don't quite understand what they want to do, and I couldn't tell from the maps that were on there. Because there's nothing, it didn't appear to be anything that says what they want to do.
Right, they'll be presenting to us in a couple minutes, so stick around or if you can call back in.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you, Tony. Anyone else, John?
No further general public comment.
All right, that's it for general, for public comment. Item number two, Selco partnership conditional use hearing. Mr. Clark.
Mr. Dentz, I will actually jump in here. The applicant is represented by Chris Schubert, and they do have three witnesses if we can have them moved into the public meeting room.
All right, thank you.
Moving them in now.
We're the wrong people. We're for Kinder Morgan. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, we'll have you move back out.
Sorry, guys. Who additionally do we need on this item?
I believe Andrew Miller and Chris, who are your other two that you had coming?
I have Sean Paul, who I saw him in the waiting room, and Jennifer Coyle said that she was on as well.
Okay, we're moving them in now.
Looks like Cody's still in. He needs to be removed, right?
Yes.
Removing him now.
Okay, so I believe normally we take a motion to open the public hearing for the conditional use application.
Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Check it. All in favor? Aye.
This is a hearing this evening. From the applicant's name is Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless. Property in question is located at 400 Oxford Valley Road, Langhorne, Pennsylvania, 19047. Bucks County Tax Map Parcel 13-3-31. This is an application requesting conditional use approval to allow for the co-location of a telecommunications facility on the rooftop of the Sheridan Hotel building on the property, which is located in the HC zoning district. The applicant is represented this evening by Christopher Schubert. Mr. Schubert, I would ask that you offer your witnesses to be sworn by the court reporter and then provide a summary of each witness's testimony and then make yourself and your witnesses available for further questioning from the board. Is that agreeable?
It is. It is, Ms. Gallagher.
Great. So Ms. Brown Dorff, if you want to swear the witnesses, then we'll turn it over to Mr. Schubert.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So hope you got it.
I do. I do.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Coyle, will you be testifying this evening as well? I think you're on mute.
I'm not sure, but I do.
Jen, you just say that we have a lease agreement, Jen.
Yeah, thank you.
So, Mr. Schubert, you can proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Members of the board, thank you this evening for allowing us to make the presentation on the conditional use. This is a very straightforward application. It's a proposal by Selco Partnership, better known as Verizon Wireless, for the installation of communication antennas on the rooftop of the Sheridan Hotel, which is located at 400 Oxford Valley Road. You're probably familiar with that property. It's a 14-story building. It is across the street from where Sesame Place is. It's also near the Jefferson Bucks County Hospital and also along the very busy corridor of Oxford Valley Road and the interchange in that location. According to Matt Tekeeta, the zoning officer, we had made submission for an application, and he viewed that in light of the fact that these would be the first set of antennas being placed up on top of the hotel building, that this would require a conditional use approval. We were before the planning commission on October 27 and made essentially a full presentation to the planning commission that evening, and the planning commission had the planning commission had offered its recommendation of approval unanimously. And I do have a series of exhibits that I could quickly go through and provide summary of testimony for the individual witnesses, if that would be the board's pleasure.
And, Mr. Schubert, I believe that those were provided to the township earlier today, so our people shouldn't have it. There you go. But you have.
So, just to familiarize the board, let me minimize this. This is Exhibit A3, and this would be the subject property, and it located at 400 Oxford Valley Road. And of course, what we're looking to do is install a total panel-style antennas on top of the roof.
Sorry, Mr. Schubert, we're only seeing an exhibit list, not the actual aerial.
Oh. You are sharing screen. You don't see the, I have on my screen Exhibit A3. You don't see that?
Not open.
You may have to close screen share and reopen it.
Okay. How's that?
There you go.
Better. All right. So, this would be the aerial of the subject building, and the red dots would indicate where the antennas are proposed to be placed on top of the building rooftop. There would be two panel-style antennas in each of these areas for a total of six antennas being placed. And the equipment that would actually operate the antennas would be located in the basement parking garage of the building. So there would be no equipment that would be located on the ground, visible at the ground level. The owner of the property is Ashford TRS Bucks County LLC. And my site acquisition consultant, Jen Coyle, would testify that in looking around, this was an existing tall structure, which all providers would typically prefer to have, and ultimately Verizon was able to negotiate a rooftop license agreement, a lease agreement with the underlying property owner, which has been fully executed by Verizon and the property owner. So her testimony would be that this lease would be in full force and effect, giving the applicant standing to proceed forward with the application, and also to pursue any and all entitlements and approvals that would be required. So that in essence would be the summary of testimony of the site acquisition consultant, Jen Coyle. The next witness I would call would be Sean Paul, and Sean is the radio frequency expert who would be testifying on behalf of Verizon Wireless. His CV was provided to the board and is marked as applicant's Exhibit A15. And essentially, Mr. Paul would testify that Verizon Wireless is a licensed wireless provider licensed by the Federal Communications Commission, and marked as applicant's Exhibit A6 are the series of FCC licenses that Verizon holds in this area and authorizes it to operate its wireless network. He would also testify based upon a radio frequency design report as to the need for this facility. The original report was authored by Andrew Peterson, who Mr. Paul works in association with, and this is a report marked as applicant's Exhibit A7, a letter dated October 26 to Jen Coyle. And just to point out in the report, these are the surrounding sites that provide existing coverage in the township, and this site is necessary because of the tremendous demand in this area for cell phone service, not only voice but also data service, because again of the high concentration of users in this area, both with the hospital, the mall, Sesame Place, and also a lot of the offices and commuter traffic that runs through this area. So this site is proposed primarily to provide some additional offload capacity coverage. And that was shown on this exhibit, which is part of the report. And although this at first blush looked pretty confusing, essentially what all these colors represent are the coverage that come from the surrounding sites, the Oxford Valley site here to the northeast, the Woodburn site here to the southwest, and the South Fairless Hill site to the southeast. And each of these colors represent the sectors that provide coverage back to the proposed site, which is called Sesame Place. And this sector in pink is coming from the South Fairless Hill site. The sector here in green is coming from this Woodburn site, and Oxford Valley is providing coverage in this kind of tan color. And where we have a conjunction of these And where we have a conjunction of these coverages from in particular South Fairless Hills to the southeast and Oxford Valley to the northwest, you can see it gets a little bit choppy in here and this happens to be the area where Verizon is targeting to provide some additional capacity coverage to essentially provide a very strong server and offloading of capacity from these surrounding sites. And that is shown on this exhibit, which is part of the report Figure 2. And ultimately, this would be providing coverage from Sesame Place from that building rooftop showing up here in yellow, dark brown to the west and this tan color to kind of the southeast and providing the offloading coverage to Oxford Valley and also on South Fairless Hills. So that's the real purpose for the site. There is also, part of the ordinance requirements are to establish that the facility will operate in compliance with the emission standards established by the FCC and that's what this report is, applicant's Exhibit A8. And this essentially concludes that operating at full capacity with full power and full arrays in operation, this facility would generate only 1.6% of the applicable limit. So essentially 50 times below the FCC limit. So it would be compliant. The next report also required under the ordinance is to establish that the facility will not cause any interference and in light of the fact that all these antennas and the equipment would be operating at a set frequency assigned by the FCC, it would not create any hazardous or harmful interference with any other radio or television-based technologies. The ordinance also requires a determination that the antennas are not going to result in any sort of adverse condition to air travel, air navigation. That's what this report is, applicant's Exhibit A10. And in light of the fact that we are going to be on top of an existing building and we are under 20 feet and not extending our antennas above the rooftop, actually more than 10 feet, we would comply with this requirement under the FAA. So that essentially would be the testimony of the radio frequency expert. And the final expert that would be testifying would be Andrew Miller and Andrew Miller is a licensed engineer with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and he was involved and I believe he actually sealed off on the plans that had been filed with the township as part of this application. And these plans depict essentially a site plan view of the building rooftop, if I can bring that up, which would show the layout again with the antennas being mounted on ballast-mounted sleds on top of the building and the equipment then or the cables being connected up to the equipment that would be located in the basement garage, which is depicted on this sheet four of the plan set. And then there's an elevation view that shows the antennas on top of this building at a very high height. Part of the ordinance requirements require compliance with all the applicable codes. Mr. Miller's firm undertook to do a structural analysis and applicant's Exhibit A12 is the structural analysis which establishes that the building rooftop can support the antennas and in fact, the antennas would be mounted and maintained in accordance with the applicable building code standards. They would be known as the NC Standard 222G, which is presently in effect. So there would be no concern in terms of any of the engineering or code requirements. That would be fully compliant. Photo simulations were also done by the engineers and the next series of exhibits marked as applicant's Exhibit A13 show the visual based upon placing the antennas on top of the building and just toggling back and forth. I can focus in on this a little bit better. So this is the before and then the next picture would be the after with the antennas placed at that sector. There's another view here of before and then after with the antennas placed at that location and then the final view of before and after. At the planning commission, there was some concern with regard to the proposed steeling method for the antennas. That's what required under the ordinance. And one of the issues is to, one of the available options is painting the antennas to match the color of the building. But there was another option that was presented, which the planning commission favored and that's a steeling technology, which is provided by a company called Obscurtech. And what they do is provide a Mylar adhesive coating that can be put onto the antennas. It's a reflective base coating that will mimic whatever the sky happens to be that day. If it's a blue sky, it will reflect blue. If it's a gray sky, it will reflect gray. So essentially, it's as close as you can get to making these antennas painted with invisible paint. And this is kind of how the technology works based upon their marketing information and examples in real-life application. This is actually an installation at the First Methodist Church of Germantown in Philadelphia. And although it's difficult to see, there is an antenna that I'm circling right here at that location. There's another view where it points out the antennas that are placed up on top of that historic church. Other applications similar to what we would have here, this is a building where the reflective Mylar was put on the antennas and the close-up shows where those antennas are located. So you can actually see that these prior antennas, these circular whip-style antennas are more visible from the ground than what the other antennas are. So that's kind of the theory and that is what Verizon is willing to do with regard to this application to address the steeling requirements. And they're prepared to move forward in that regard. We did receive Joe Jones's review letter and as we discussed at the planning commission meeting, this is essentially a will comply letter to the applicable requirements under it. There's issues with regard to insurance indemnification. These are all items that the applicant would be willing to adhere and address. There was a comment made with regard to making the rooftop available for co-location and essentially Verizon doesn't have any problem with that, but we don't own a rooftop. Verizon co-locates on other wireless providers installations all the time and vice versa. But we don't control the rooftop, but nevertheless, we don't believe that that would be any issue in terms of structural. So from that standpoint, Verizon is fine with it. We also with regard to this requirement that we, that there's a gap with regard to all wireless operators since 2019 and I know that the township ordinance is a little bit older than the recent change in the law, but as of 2019, the FCC made very clear that especially here in Pennsylvania within the 3rd District, that the only issue that we really need to focus in on is the function of the applicant's wireless network. So whether or not Verizon has an issue with regard to its network, whether it's in terms of coverage or capacity. So from that standpoint, we, I believe the RF Design Report certainly makes out the case that Verizon does need the site to alleviate capacity issues and we're not that much concerned with regard to other providers' networks like AT&amp;T or T-Mobile. But aside from those technical issues, these are all will complies and can also be addressed and further reviewed by Mr. Jones during the building permit review process. So that essentially would be the summary of Mr. Miller's testimony and I have nothing further. I would believe that all the exhibits that have been offered would establish compliance with conditional use standards and at this point I'd offer them into evidence and arrest.
Thank you, Mr. Schubert. And from the township's perspective, we do have a few exhibits. The first being a copy of the proof of advertising. This hearing tonight was advertised on November 4th and November 9th and then a copy of the proof of posting of the property, which happened about two weeks ago. And also, Mr. Schubert has provided copies of the notifications sent to the neighboring property owners, which does appear to be in conformity with the township's requirements. So at this time, if there's any questions for Mr. Schubert or his witnesses, that would be appropriate.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Rocco? Mr. Palmer? You're muted.
My only question was, was there a possibility of coexistence? And he answered that. So no, I have nothing else.
Mr. Boraski?
Nothing, thanks.
I have none. We want to, do we close the hearing now or do we go to public comment, Lauren?
You can close the hearing and then move to public comment.
Is there a motion?
Yep. I make the motion to close.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Is there any public comment needed, John?
No public comment on this agenda item.
All right. Is there a motion then?
So moved.
I'll second it.
A motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Take care. Item number three is Kinder Morgan waiver of land development. Do you want to take us through this one? Mr. Clark again? No?
I do believe that the applicant and their representatives are in the waiting room if we want to bring them in.
Okay. Moving them in now.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Larry Young. I'm from Tri-State Engineers who prepared the plans for tonight. I'm here with Chris Levens. He's the contractor that will be doing the work. The applicant on this application is Kinder Morgan Bulk Termel Inc. And the owner of the property is US Steel. The property is located at One Center Road. It's adjacent to the Deepwater Port out there where Kinder Morgan exists. The proposal tonight is there's an existing 8,000-square-foot maintenance building and the applicant wants to expand it by 1,593 square feet to house the equipment and tools that they use. There will be no storage of materials in there. That's it in a nutshell. We received the resolution, the draft resolution today in which they're all complies within the letter or the resolution. There's a couple waivers that were requesting partial waivers and full waivers that are synonymous with the previously submitted plans for this site, where the existing building was once on an application. The partial waiver is not to survey all of US Steel. We did tie the deed line into the property boundary and on our plans, you can see that we're over 200 or 300 feet from any boundary line where the building addition will go. That's number 1A in your resolution. Number 1B, we did provide an aerial photograph to show the 200 feet of land to be developed around the site. That's on Sheet 7, the aerial. 1C is to provide monumentation. Again, we did tie the boundary. The corners are pretty far away and we're asking for a partial waiver for that. 1D, we're asking for not to do a takeoff of all the impervious surface existing and proposed of this application. We are building the building addition over existing impervious. So there's no increase in impervious surface at this site. And 1E, we're requiring a waiver for planting strips. This whole area is macadam and for the ease of movement of vehicles and parking, the applicant wishes to keep it like that. And all the rest are will complies. We do acknowledge that we need a floodplain permit and earth disturbance permit and we're asking for the waiver of the land development process tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions. It's a pretty simple application.
It's very straightforward. Mr. Jones, do you have any comments on the application? You're muted.
No comments. I apologize.
All right. It's a pretty straightforward plan. For those that aren't aware, the location is in the far back corner of the US Steel site where the port is and it's just going to be a building used for storage of, you know, material that's, I guess, shipping in and out of the port. Is there any comment from board members? Mr. Rocco?
Just to kind of echo what you said, you know, these are all standard waivers back there. Nope.
Mr. Galloway?
No, no comments.
Mr. Boraski?
No comments. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
No comments.
And I have no comments. Is there anything else that we need from Ms. Gallagher or Mr. Tequita?
I have no comments this evening.
Okay, Mr. Tequita?
No comments. The resolution number though is 2020-33.
Okay, thank you. We have 2020-33. Is there a motion to approve or deny?
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Motion made and seconded. I'm sorry. Oh wait, you know what? We need the public comment. Is there any public comment needed?
No public comment on this agenda item.
All right. I'm sorry, everyone. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None? All right. Congratulations.
Thank you. Until your night.
All right.
Thank you.
Give John a minute to clear them out. Okay. That takes us to item number four, which is the galvanized plant. Another minor subdivision on Middle Drive. Get some folks to move in, John?
Yep, moving them in now.
Good evening. This is it, the two of you?
Good evening. It should just be me and Bob Showalter. Yeah, just the two of us.
All right. Do you want to quickly, briefly take us through exactly what you're doing here?
Sure. Here tonight on behalf of US Steel Corporation, essentially what we're proposing is a minor subdivision. We're taking off, we're subdividing off a 25.5-acre portion of the larger KIPC site. It's the portion of the property that contains the existing galvanized plant. We're seeking to essentially sell the remainder of the KIPC property and retain the galvanized plant. We've already been before the zoning hearing board. We received three variances, one for impervious coverage, one for minimum lot frontage and lot width, and one for front yard setback. It's a somewhat interesting property in the fact that there are no public roads back in the KIPC site. They're mostly driveways. So most of our waivers that we're requesting this evening are related to curving, street improvements, street trees, things like that. I have Bob Showalter here with me, as I said, who can provide any responses to any of your technical questions. But with that, I would just ask if there are any questions from the board.
Right. So the short of it for those watching at home is US Steel has an operating galvanizing plant down there. This whole entire site, not just this site, is for sale. They're basically subdividing it so they can keep their plan operating and selling off the rest. And that's correct, right, Mr. Stevenson?
That's correct.
Is there any questions for, from board members? Mr. Rocco?
None. Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
None.
Mr. Palmer? You're muted.
None.
And Mr. Brassi?
No questions.
Right. So this is about as straightforward as it can get. You're not building anything. I know that Tony Patis wanted to comment on this. Is she still here? John?
No public comment on this item.
None. Okay. I guess, I guess hope that answered all your questions, Tony. It's pretty straightforward. With that, is there a motion to approve or deny?
Actually, resolution.
Resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a resolution.
Yeah, 34.
2020-34.
I make the motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to item number five, continuous materials manufacturing. They're going to come here tonight and introduce us in to a project they're planning down along, not far from the landfill. John, you can move them in now?
Just a moment, please. Moving them in now.
Looks like Mr. Jennings is at his lake house.
Yeah, I wish, Mr. Mr. Dents. Just, just a dream, a river in another state. And I'm waiting for David Lewis and Alan Bradshaw. I know Alan was in the waiting. There's Alan.
They're being moved in now.
Thank you.
All right. You're all here. All right, Mr. Jennings, you want to take us through this briefly and explain what we're doing?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. The Continuous Materials is proposing a project of, on waste management property along New Ford Mill Road. The project will recover materials from the waste stream and produce a finished and final product. And with me this evening are two executives of the company. And I would like for them to tell you more about what the company actually does. Alan Bradshaw and David Lewis. Go ahead.
Well, thanks, Tom, and thanks for your time tonight. I believe we have a presentation that was sent to Matt. If Matt's there, I think you were, were going to have the presentation available to folks there.
Yes, that was given to Foster. If they could put that up now.
Just a moment.
Sure.
And Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, Continuous is not seeking any action tonight. Simply wanted to describe what it is that they do. There'll be some on the lot questioned. There'll be a couple of zoning issues. And will be before the zoning hearing board probably next month. And of course, we welcome the township's support in that application.
Thank you. Guys, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't see your presentation. Could I ask the name of it, please?
It should just be Continuous Materials Everboard Expansion. If you don't have it, that's, that's fine. We can, we can just talk to the project.
Yeah, I apologize. It wasn't sent to us.
Okay. I apologize for that. So, yeah, let me quickly introduce. So my name's Alan Bradshaw. I am in charge of operations for Continuous Materials. And with me tonight is David Lewis. He is our Director of Engineering and will be chiefly responsible for construction of the project. What we're proposing with Continuous Materials is a facility on New Ford Mill Road that would produce a product called Everboard. Everboard is a four by eight roofing panel, which is used in commercial roofing applications. It is primarily paper and plastic that is recovered from the residential municipal solid waste stream. The company Continuous Materials, the majority owner, is a investment firm called EICP. They're out of California. The minority owner is Waste Management, whom I know you're all familiar with. The, the Everboard product is a, it goes on top of the roofs of commercial buildings across the country. This is a first of its kind product. And we have an existing facility in Des Moines, Iowa, making a small volume of the product, which we're sold out on today. One of our largest customers is Carlisle Roofing, which you may be familiar with in Pennsylvania. One of the largest roofing contractors in the country. What's unique about this product is that it, it is the only product, roofing product that's passed a FM Factory Mutual, who's the largest insurer of buildings, a rating called Very Severe Hail. The plastic inside this product actually is hugely beneficial to the final product as it essentially has high compressive strength and allows, it protects the building from, from severe hail damage in the area of the country, primarily from Dallas through Chicago. But the product is, is proven, it's in the marketplace. And what we're looking to do is build a facility that would expand the scale production to a scale that is, you know, a financially viable, ongoing business. What we're looking for with this, from the township, is a setback allowance. We currently, along New Ford Mill Road, and Tom, I know you've got the drawing there, but we don't have the package. I apologize for that. But currently, the township requires a 100-foot setback from the property line along New Ford Mill Road. And if you're, if you're not familiar with this property, it's a 10, 10 to 12 acre site. Very narrow between the Q road, which is a privately owned road that the waste management trucks come, come down to deliver to the landfill. And, and between that road and New Ford Mill Road. It's an ideal site really for this project because it's a long and narrow site. And the, the facility that we're building is, it just suits that dimension very well. Unfortunately, the 100 feet pushes our, our, our construction of the building so far to the west. It pushes us up against some wetlands, environmentally sensitive areas. Sorry, Tom.
Well, I was going to say, Alan, all of, all of that will be heard by the zoning hearing board in, in the near future. And we look forward to their guidance and some relief. On the project itself, extracting material from the waste stream, a very good thing to produce the product that Alan had mentioned. As far as the, the landfill goes and host fees, they're, this is all neutral to that. Waste management will fill the site to its permitted capacity over the next number of years. What Continuous Materials is doing is taking a segment of that waste stream for more immediate projects and, and product. So in the sense of planning for host fees and the like, this, this operation will not have an impact on that. It is entirely neutral. Alan, anything further or David?
Just quickly on, on, on the job creation. So this facility will be using really high, the latest technology in terms of pressing. We press these, these boards very much like a wood product panel. And, and, and the recovery technology to pull the plastic and paper out of the waste stream is, is very high tech. So they're, they're good paying jobs. We expect to have in, when we're operating fully, about 100 jobs and 340 construction jobs during the, the build from May to, May 2021 to October 2022. Environmentally, just very quickly, we do not use processed water. So there is, is not other, other than occasional water for cleanup. The emissions are very, very low. They're, they don't, the, the project doesn't require any emission control technology because the, there's very little, or this is all happening at very low temperature and there are very few emissions. We've already been in touch with the DEP, shared a lot of, of data with them. And, and we're, we're quite confident that we'll, we'll go forward without having any additional environmental control. So, so, and then in terms of, of traffic, as I mentioned, the facility is, is built in between New Ford Mill Road and the Q road. The truck traffic that's currently coming to the landfill simply passes by our facility. Today, in current operations, we see 25, 25 to 55 trucks per hour coming to landfill. We would divert about four to six of those trucks per hour to feed our raw material supply. And in terms of finished product, outbound product, we expect to have about 19 to 22 trucks per day. That would be during a 12-hour shipping window that would be outbound. And we're looking at bimodal rail operations in the industrial park that, that may, you know, enable us to, to use rail outbound as well. But very minimal impact on, on outbound or inbound, you know, truck traffic, all coming in off Tiberan Road. Without having a sketch plan, I apologize. It's kind of hard for you all to see. But I, I would essentially say, Tom, I don't have anything to add, but I'm, I'm, I would welcome any questions from the board of supervisors on our company, the product or the project that we have proposed.
Well, thank you, Alan. And Mr. Chairman, I would just add that the company looks forward to working with the township professionals through land development and the ZHB matter that I mentioned and hopes to have your support in that. And with that, if the, the board has any questions, perhaps Alan or David could, could provide an answer.
All right. Well, thank you. That was a quick and, you covered pretty much everything. For those at home, this is another heavy industrial area. Like they mentioned, this is major truck traffic on their way to the landfill during the day. Other than the industrial park right there, there's not much other traffic. You know, maybe on the weekends at night, there's some vehicles heading down towards Penn Warner or Pensbury Manor or Quaker Pen Park. You answered all my questions, which were traffic, the byproduct, and tipping fees. So other than my questions, do we have any other questions from board members? Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, yes, just one. So I understand the 100, 100-foot setback. But what, what is the proposal currently?
The proposal is for 30 feet of setback.
Okay. Okay. And have you looked at other locations around there as well?
We have, in fact. We've, we've, we've looked at some other properties. This one is by far the, the, the most efficient from a transportation inbound material perspective. But, you know, we're, we're, we're open to looking at other sites. If there were other sites that were conducive to our manufacturing layout, certainly we'd be open to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the technology seems really cool.
Yeah.
Just wondering.
Yeah, this is a, just a, a real quick comment. You know, this is a first, this is the first scale facility of this product in, in North America. And we're really excited about it. We, we expect to fill five of these sites across the US. And we've already had a lot of interest globally. So Asia and, and India are very excited about the potential here. But so, so bringing, you know, our, our goal right now is to remove 1 million tons a year annually from landfills in the US by, by placing it in. And what's really exciting about it is we've approached companies like Target, Home Depot, Walmart. They, we can literally take the garbage from their facilities and turn it into a building product to build their buildings. And they're, they're just very excited about that. So we're, we're, we're really proud of it. And, and we've done, put a lot of work into developing the product with minimal impact. And looking forward to, to working with you all and having a first.
It's cool. It's very cool. All right. Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Mr. Brassi, any questions?
Just one question. The, so the products coming in, in the tractors and trailers is mostly or all recyclables? And?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
And I was just curious of, you know, where they were coming from.
Yeah, it literally is the, the, the garbage bag that you put to the, into, into the trash can on the side of your own. So, I mean, we're literally taking residential waste. There is a tremendous amount of plastic and paper in residential waste. It's approximately 25% of every ton of residential waste in Philadelphia. We've, we've studied it quite a bit. And all of that paper, not all of it, the vast, vast majority of that paper and plastic is recoverable, completely without a human hand touching it. And, and, and it, in, we've, in, in combination, under these conditions, the, the product becomes, it's ideal for its intended use.
And then the rest of the product continues to the landfill?
Yeah, we're also looking at MRF residuals. So these MRFs that are set up by waste management that are taking the recycled bins and, and extracting cardboard and PTE bottles, things like that, metals. The residuals that are left over from that that go to the landfill, we're also extracting material from residuals of, of, of the MRFs. In fact, it's very rich in material for us. It's, it's concentrated. It averages about 40% recoverable material versus the 25 in residential.
With the truck coming in, then you guys will also, you guys will have trash going out to the landfill?
Yeah, so we'll, if you think about this way, the, the truck will come in, pull into our tip floor. It will, it will, we'll extract the load on the tip floor. From the tip floor is completely covered and closed building. It'll go from there into our process. We'll recover the 25%. We're going to use the other 75% goes back automatically into, through conveyor into a trailer. And that trailer is taken to the landfill.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Galloway?
Nothing. Just it's exciting technology. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I hope that if Matt can share that PowerPoint that we put together, it kind of gives you a little bit more detail and reinforces the messages that both Alan and Tom have shared this today. And we look forward to working with you guys going forward.
All right, Mr. Lewis, we didn't get one more question?
Sure.
You have any questions or comments, Mr. Palmer?
No, no, I think you guys hit all the bullet points.
Yeah. You know, when I originally saw this plan, a couple, I guess it was two months ago now.
August, yeah.
You know, my biggest question was the truck traffic was a concern. But the idea that you're just diverting trucks that are already on their way to the landfill makes sense. They're just going to grab a couple an hour and let them just keep rolling right through again.
Exactly right. There's no additional truck traffic coming down Tiber. It's, those trucks were headed there anyway.
Right. So your next step, I guess, is zoning hearing board?
Correct. That's right. December 8th.
We wish you luck and thank you for the presentation. Maybe we can get the PowerPoint up on our website so residents can take a look at it.
It tells our story and there's a video attached with it.
All right, we can do that.
Yeah. Mr. Dents?
Yes.
I don't think we need to take public comment, but I thought they said that there was.
Okay, that's fine. Is there?
Ah, yes, there is public comment.
Yeah, I don't think we need to because it's just a sketch, but.
Right.
There's no requirement, but you, you can if you would like.
Did you say there is no public comment, John, or there is?
There is.
Okay. You can bring them in.
Okay, we're bringing Mike in now.
And Mike, can you state your name, please?
You're on mute, Mike.
All right, sorry about that. Mike Kaufman. Can I hear me?
Yes, yes, Mike.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, you guys are saying there's no going to be additional truck traffic. But what about the additional traffic from all the employees that'll be coming to and from work? And how will all this extra traffic affect the residents who live along Pennsylvania Avenue?
With regard to Pennsylvania Avenue, that's the primary going into the industrial park, as I under- park, as I understand it, correct? We don't see any additional traffic necessarily coming from that one, from our, the trucks coming in and the trucks going out. No changes at all. But obviously, where the employees will live, we didn't, we do have that factored in there. We will have during the construction phase, obviously, construction employees that we would normally see. But the employees, we don't necessarily have their location identified where they're going to live, and obviously, that'll be their primary route. Well, we only have about 20 employees per shift, this is a four-shift operation, and so the traffic, we believe, is going to be rather minor, moving in mostly from Tiberan Road and also from the Tallytown Township.
Another question, where would the main entrance be for this place? Because sometimes I walk this guy up and down Pennsylvania Avenue, and if something were to happen to him, and I know there's a lot of residents here with other, you know, dogs and the van gets loose, or even people, you know, I don't know how this is all going to play out. Because I recently moved here about a year ago, and I love it back here, it's a, you know, quiet little town, and everybody's friendly, so I don't, I don't have like great feelings of all this new stuff coming in.
Well, if I could answer the road issue, the trucks coming into the site would be coming down Tiberan Road, for the most part. Not Pennsylvania Avenue, which prohibits waste trucks anyway.
You can't even go there.
And for employees, they may be coming on the various roads, not entirely sure, but David has mentioned, we're talking 20 employees per shift. Not a significant number of vehicles, I would submit. But in any case, the facility itself is pretty close to the intersection of New Ford Mill and Tiber. So it's not terribly close to Pennsylvania Avenue.
And to answer the question directly, the main entrance is off of Q Road, which is the road that the trucks go down toward the waste scales for the landfill.
Oh, that's at the traffic light there? At an old?
No, we're further south. We're further south towards the landfill itself, Mike. So we're really quite a ways away from the Pennsylvania side of the, we actually have the whole industrial park between us and Pennsylvania Avenue.
Mike, if you think where Q Road and New Ford Mill Road split or meet, at that point, that's the beginning of the property.
I'm not familiar with Q Road, but I know New Ford Mill and Tiber.
Yeah, Q Road is a private road that Waste Management uses for incoming trash vehicles headed for the scale. But, you know, the access point, I think maybe is one of your issues, is it's not on the road, it's setback, well, we were just discussing the setback. But it's New Ford Mill, not Pennsylvania Avenue.
Okay. I don't know if there's a couple other people that I saw in the queue, maybe want to say something?
Anyone else?
I'll piggyback to what I had to say.
Yeah, we have more public comment, we can move in Myers now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have four public comment total. You want me to bring them in individually, or would you like me to bring them all in now? Sorry, what was that?
Can they state their name and where they're from? I'm not sure if they're from Morrisville or Falls Township.
We're gonna bring them in one at a time, John.
Gotcha.
I was from Falls, if that means anything.
No, no, I just wanted to figure out where you were on.
I'm on the, I'm on the other side of Post Road closer to Tiber.
Very good.
Yep. All right, we have Myers next, is that correct? You state your name and where you live for your record? You're muted.
Harry Myers.
No! It's the wrong one!
Yes, this isn't the right one?
No!
You're not going to comment on this one, man? We don't have any comments on this one.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else, John?
Yep, moving another person in now. Tony's coming in now.
Hello?
Hi, Tony.
Hi. First off, let me tell you, your other breakout room, there was somebody there with a lot of F-words and some really nasty statements, and I didn't appreciate it. But anyhow, what kind of waste will be generated and how much?
Oh, good question. Alan, you want to take that?
Well, so, well, I'll try, if you could be a little bit more specific, we're, so we're not generating any waste, we're taking, we're taking existing waste that is on its way to the landfill, and we're extracting a portion of that waste, and then we're converting it into these boards. Any waste at the site would be, that I can think of, would be, we have dust control, so if there's any dust created, that's internally to the building, we'll have dust collection systems for that. Otherwise, there is no water, there is no, there's no chemicals used in the process, just heat and cold. And then the, and then the materials we're extracting, which are paper, post-consumer paper and plastics.
Okay, so when your panels are put up, and at some point, they end up being taken down for whatever reason, and they end up being put back in the way?
Yeah, we reuse them, that's the view. This is kind of a circular economy play, which is why it's really unique. So, the roofing panels have a 20-year life cycle, and building owners, industrial building owners generally re-roof in sections every five years, but the panels have a 20-year life cycle. When they're done, they can be extracted, brought back to our plant, we grind them up, and we can reuse material to make new boards.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Tony, thanks for your question.
All right, anyone else for a public comment?
John? That was the last one.
All right, thank you. You can, yeah, there you go. I guess that's it, we have no more questions right from the board?
Yeah.
Nope, no questions.
All right, we thank you very much, and I wish you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
All right, give me a minute here, a second, I'm sorry. Where are we at? Item number six is our budget presentation. We're still waiting to clear a few folks out. Is Mrs. Rukoff here?
John, if you could, that's in.
Moving her in now.
Hi.
Good evening, Mrs. Rukoff. Oh, there you are.
Good evening, I hope everyone's doing well. I'm going to share my screen for the presentation of the proposed 2021 budget.
All right, so yours, when you're ready.
John, if you could, that's your good share screen.
John?
Sorry, what was that? Oh, there she goes.
Is it coming up?
No, we just see your, looks like your Chrome browser.
You need to bring the presentation to front of your computer window. We're only seeing the Zoom window currently.
Yeah, it's not. Are we there?
We're there.
We got it.
Thank you for your patience, sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. Here's the presentation of the proposed budget for 2021 for your review. The proposed tax rate for 2021 is 7.22 mils, it's the same rate as 2020. There's no tax increase proposed for Falls Township's residents. Seven tax funds make up the total millage rate charged to our township residents. The general fund is the chief operating fund of the township. The street lighting fund is used to account for the cost of electricity and maintenance of the highway and streetlights located in the township. The fire protection fund helps to support our local fire companies. The fire hydrant fund is restricted to expenditures for the maintenance and repair of fire hydrants located within the township. The parks and recreation fund is restricted to the development of recreational programs in our township parks. The Fallington Library Fund helps to support our local library, and the Rescue Squad Fund helps to support our local rescue squads. That brings us to our total millage rate of 7.22 mils. The millage distribution will remain unchanged for 2021. For every tax dollar paid in 2020, less than four cents was received by Falls Township. The balance is collected by the County of Bucks and the Pensbury School District. Our residents' tax dollars are used to provide a full range of municipal services, including police and fire protection, construction and maintenance of streets and storm sewers, recycling, residential solid waste pickup, zoning regulations, building inspections, parks and recreational activities, and the maintenance and replacement of streetlights. Contributions to our fire companies, rescue squads, and the library that serve Falls Township residents are also funded through the real estate tax dollars. There's a chart showing what these services cost our taxpayers. Based on an assessment of $30,000, a Falls Township resident can expect to pay $216.60. As you can see, this is by far the lowest cost of our neighboring municipalities. Please note, our neighboring municipalities' figures also include assessments for trash and leaf pickups, which are free to Falls Township residents due to our partnership with Waste Management. Some highlights of the 2021 proposed budget. Our 2021 projected revenues, which include reliance by the general fund on host community fees of $16.8 million, reliance by the general fund on resource recovery fees of $950,000, and additional projected revenues, including our local services tax at $575,000, cable TV franchise fees at $650,000, real estate transfer taxes at $800,000, building, electrical, and fire permits at a total of $760,000, and our state pension system assistance at $650,000. Regarding our 2021 pension obligation, while state pension assistance the township receives has remained relatively static, and actually for 2021 is projected to decrease slightly, the township's minimum municipal obligation to the pension plan has risen dramatically. As shown by the red line on the chart, the township's pension obligation doubled from $1.3 million in 2012 to $2.6 million in 2017. For 2018 through 2020, our pension obligation was over $2.8 million each year. For 2021, the township has budgeted $3,129,537. As you can see from this chart, the assistance we receive from the state does little to offset our pension costs. The net cost to the township for 2021 is projected to be $2,479,537. Budgeted expenditures from the general fund total $23,383,688. 55.9% of that amount, or $13 million, is used to provide police services to our community. Some 2021 proposed capital projects. The continuation of the Township Road Program in 2021, a full-depth reconstruction of Willow Drive is budgeted at $3,665,000. $50,000, I don't know why that cut off, sorry. $50,325 has been budgeted for improvements to the intersection of North Olds Boulevard and Trenton Road. The total project cost is anticipated to be over $250,000. PennDOT will provide 80% of the funding through their Green Light Go-Grin. $57,100. Sorry. There we go. $57,100 has been budgeted for the remaining engineering costs on adaptive traffic signal upgrades to be installed on Lincoln Highway, Tiberan Road, Oxford Valley Road, and West Trenton Avenue. The total project cost is anticipated to be $1,355,000, with federal funding picking up 80% of the cost. The construction portion of this project is expected in 2022. There are currently many dead or dying trees throughout the township, creating a hazardous situation for residents and visitors. Many of our trees have been infested by the Emerald Ash Borer and the Spotted Lantern Fly. Others have been weakened from storm damage, age, and disease. We've budgeted $150,000 to continue the tree trimming and removal begun in 2018. The purchase of five vehicles, computer equipment, firearms training, and supplies, and various other equipment for the Police Department has been budgeted at $470,000. The Public Works Department needs to replace three aging F-550 dump trucks in their fleet. $243,000 has been budgeted for these purchases. Based on the proposed budget, a total of $36,417,441 is projected to be spent in the year 2021. The budget schedule for 2021 includes tonight's discussion of the proposed budget, advertisement of the 2021 proposed budget on November 22nd, additional budget discussions from November 16th through December 21st, public inspection of the proposed budget from November 30th to December 21st, and adoption of the 2021 budget at the December 21st Board Supervisors' meeting. That concludes our presentation of the 2021 proposed budget. Just to shout out to two of our township residents for their photos, the opening and closing photographs on this evening's slideshow, our submissions to the 2020 Parks and Rec Fall Photo Contest by Township residents Pamela Kennedy and Dawn Denner. If there are any questions on the proposed budget, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rukoff, for an excellent presentation, as usual. Any questions from board members, Mr. Palmer?
I have none at this time.
Mr. Galloway?
No, fine job, Mrs. Rukoff, thank you.
Mr. Baraski?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Mr. Rocco?
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Yeah, and we're going to be discussing this again, obviously, so at this time I have nothing as well. I know there's some public comment. John, is there anyone for public comment?
Yep, moving them in now.
Hello, Guido, can you hear me?
He's muted.
You can hit star sex to unmute yourself.
You can hit star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, now you can hear me.
We got you now, Guido. Good hearing from you.
Okay, good. Always good hearing from you guys. Miss Rukoff, you're the best. Always was. Still are.
Thank you, sir.
I got a couple of things here. You know, the budget is the most important management tool that's available to our government, any government. It establishes policy and the financial method by which that policy and decisions are being made. Now, I want to address two policy decisions that I want this board to consider. And I'd like it implemented with this 2021 budget. And the first one, you're not going to be surprised, is an EIT. Now, does this board realize that Bucks County towns earned over $79 to $80 million from an EIT tax? I say we contributed $3 to $4 million to that, and we never got anything back. Now, a couple of years ago, I gave this board a report of municipalities within the counties of Northampton, Lehigh, Montgomery, and Bucks that included the tax rate of non-residents' EIT, total resident tax, and total local services tax. In the past two years, both years, as a matter of fact, I gave the board a copy of the official rates of an EIT, PIT, LST tax of every municipality in Bucks County at the official rate at that time, which was June 2019. Now, I think with the proposed budget, the presentation that was made tonight, it's appropriate to consider an EIT or, at the minimum, a further study of one. You recognize the financial trends that we now have an opportunity to expand our tax base, which I've been in favor of forever. Now, an EIT tax, so folks understand this, a lot of them don't, would not be an additional levy on the overwhelming numbers of fall taxpayers. Paying it, most of them pay it anyway. Understand, and people, please understand, that an employee does not pay an EIT where they work and where they live. A tax was held in any other community, then that tax is remitted to the employee's resident jurisdiction. Now, based on the science of mathematics, a range of revenue estimates indicates, at least I find it does, we are subsidizing other townships by $3 to $4 million a year. That revenue belongs to Falls Township. So I'm asking this board, please review the facts, then consider this as a suggestion for this year's budget. Now, the fall's EIT income that I did was based on 13,170 households, and the Department of Commerce median households at the rate of 1%. And that produced between $3 to $4 million per year at a rate of 40 to 50% of a collection rate. That's not much, but that's a lot of money. So finally, E-Consult Solutions, I'm sorry, did a study on Falls Township residents paying an EIT. They found that that increased from 20% to 48%. When you get up to around 40%, you're looking at an excess of $4 million coming in. That's my first proposal, and very briefly, I have another one that I'd like to see this board include in this budget. I'd like to see him do it. You know, everybody that I know of, including this board, agrees, and they agree even now, that this building, it doesn't, it's not suitable, and it doesn't address our present needs. I don't think it does. I made a couple trips through this building. I don't see it. Now, this building, while maintaining its existing infrastructure, can and should be renovated to conform and accommodate the needs that we all have now, our employees have now. And the cost, I think, is well within our objectives, and as a matter of fact, it would be a very wise allocation of resources. I know it's a big project, and this building, let me tell you, does not have to be and should not be torn down and replaced by a new building. I've heard that one. I'm not in favor of that. You know, most buildings, and I say it over and over, they're renovated, they're remodeled, and they're modernized. They're not torn down. I believe we can do the job here, and the cost can be financed and paid for, I think, within a six-year period without dependence on host fees. So I'm saying, at the very least, begin a feasibility study on the necessary renovation of this building, and let's take a look and see what it takes. I think we can do both. So that's my, that's my thing, Mr. Dentz and board, for this year's budget.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, Guido, Jeff Rocco here.
Hi, Mr. Rocco.
How you doing? Good to hear from you.
Not bad for a guy my age, I gotta tell you.
Yeah, I'm sure. Real quick on the EIT, if you recall, a few years ago, we did a study, and I think it was roughly 40% were paying, currently were paying either EIT or city wage. One thing that doesn't get recovered is city wage, and...
Well, that's true.
Yeah, I think there was a fair amount of that 40% that were paying city wage, so... You know, it didn't seem favorable at that time. The other thing, as I understand it, is we don't keep the 1%. We only get half a percent. The other half has to go to the school.
Well, you can keep the 1%. The school board has to ask for it, and I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
But that's beside the point. If there's $4 million out there, that's our $4 million.
Yeah, but the only correction is you said most would not see a tax increase. Well, and if that's the case, then 60% who aren't currently paying it would be seeing an increase. I'm not opposed to it, fully opposed to it. I think I was one of those in favor at the time. But I don't think we adopt it this year. Maybe we plan for a study again and see where we're at.
I think you really ought to do a study, because if you're talking about 1%, and if you look at it, I think just about every township now in Bucks County, with the exception of some small ones, whether it's a Humeville Borough or something like that, doesn't have one. Everyone else has one.
Well, none of us, none around us have one. None of the townships that are in Pensbury have one.
Well, yeah.
Which is a little...
You're talking about Makefield, you're talking about Humeville Borough, Pendell, I think. But that's beside the point. The point is, the overwhelming majority of them do. And the reason why they do is because it generates a lot of income without killing people. So whether, regardless, to me, the percentage of people that are paying it, and I got news for you. I don't think most people know they pay an EIT. They don't know it. And I'm not a betting man, but I'd bet you an apple pie that they don't know. Whatever it is, you do your math. I did mine. I based it on the number of households. And what the median income is, according to the Department of Commerce, I'm telling you, you're between $3 and $4 million a year. That's a lot of money. Now, if you can get that just by the people that are paying it, then can you imagine what we would get if the rest of the people paid it? But I'm sure more than that, that you're looking at the E-Consult Solutions. And there was a time, you know, we were down to 20%. And the last time they did it, I think it was about three years ago, Mr. Rocco.
Yeah.
Somewhere around there.
Yep.
And they were up to 48%. I'm telling you, you're over 50 now. Because there are other townships that did come in from that time. But that's up to you, to you, gentlemen. I mean, you know, you guys do the math.
Yep. All right. Well, have a nice Thanksgiving. Thanks for your...
You enjoy your Thanksgiving. No more than 10 people at your table.
You got it.
Thank you, Guido. John, is there anyone else for public comment?
No further public comment.
Okay, we need a motion to advertise the budget, correct? Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Rukoff.
Thank you all.
Have a good night. All right, item number seven. Consider adopting ordinance to amend the Falls Township Code at Chapter 203, Vehicles and Traffic. This is for parking on Woolston Road. We've had the, there were no signs up there for a while. Somehow, they were removed. We can't just put signs up without putting it in our ordinance. I know that we declared an emergency, I guess, and Chief Whitney had signs installed, so we're just making it legitimate now and permanent. Correct, Mrs. Gallagher?
That's correct.
All right. This is pretty straightforward. Is there any questions for board members? Mr. Palmer?
No.
Rocco?
No.
Mr. Baraski?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
Okay, and we just need a motion to approve this, right, Ms. Gallagher?
It's an ordinance, so we need the ordinance number from Mr. Tequita, but then, yes, it's a motion to approve.
Ordinance number 2020-4.
All right. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2020-4?
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right. Item number eight. Consider adopting ordinance amending Chapter 206, Records, Chapter amending Section 11, Inspection and Suspension. Ms. Gallagher, can you take us through this one?
Certainly. This is a revision to Chapter 206, which governs the township's duty tow records. And this would require each applicant for the 2021 calendar year to permit the township and its officers to inspect its books with regards to charges that are made regarding township tows.
All right. Any questions from board members? We know we've had problems in the past with overcharging and stuff from residents. You know, there's, you know, these guys rat on each other. So it's not like residents really came to us anyway. It was other towers ratting on other towers. Any other, any questions then? Mr. Palmer? No?
No.
Rocco?
Oh.
Mr. Baraski?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
Every time I look at the screen, everybody's in a different spot. That's why I keep getting confused when I'm saying names. I have no questions. Is there a motion to approve this then? We're doing this by ordinance as well?
Mr. Dentz, I think if there's public comment.
Oh, there is public comment?
There is public comment.
I wasn't sure, but...
We're doing this by ordinance again? This is 2020-5, I assume? Yes. All right. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2020-5?
I make the motion.
I second it.
Seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That takes us to, where are we at? Number eight? Oh, number nine, Minutes. Any questions or comments on the Minutes from the October 19 meeting? Excellent minutes, as always, Mrs. Pullman. It's gotta be hard doing these virtual.
I have none.
I have none.
None.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the Minutes?
Salute. Okay.
All right. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. That takes us to the Engineers Report. Mr. Jones, you're still with us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief. New land development submitted in the month of October was the master sketch plan for North Point, which I believe we heard from tonight, or we will hear from shortly, and then the Selco Partnership Project, which we heard tonight for sure. The new earth disturbance application was a residential pool. Notable points are, as usual, identified and read on the report. JG Bertucci Tract and Alro Steel Projects have had, or will very shortly have, pre-construction meetings. Both projects are still in the process of dotting the i's and crossing the t's on their developers' agreements, but we'll go to construction shortly. There are no notable points in the earth disturbances, other than the fact that the Hernandez Pool is complete. In terms of the ongoing township projects, the docks at Quaker Penn have been removed, and they are under repair for the winter season. The 2020 road program continues to move in full force in Hedger Woods. This week, as of today, actually, they actually removed pavement on half of Gilbert, and they are back up with two-way modified stone compacted. All residents have access to their driveways. That road will be paved to base course paving by the end of this week, at which time they'll move over and complete the curbs and pavement for Simons. The mill and overlay portion of the project has been completed already. You'll recall that was two roads in the Fairliss Hills section, Stanwood Road and Danbury, and two roads in the Falsington Woods section, Amesbury and Ellersdale. In terms of the 2021 through 2023 design project, we are complete on all survey work on Elderberry Drive. We are in the design process, pretty far in. And the surveyors are now mobilized onto Pine Wood Drive for the following year. So we'll have budget numbers for you early 2021 and be out to bid on the first portion by spring. That's my report. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Turn mute, Mr. Dentz.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions from board members? Mr. Palmer?
No.
Galloway?
No.
Mr. Baraski?
No.
Mr. Rocco? I have none. Is there a motion to accept the Engineers Report as presented?
Salute.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. We already heard from our executive session, so that takes us to the bill list. All right. I gotta pull this up on my phone. Give me a second. We have a bill list of over $2 million, almost 1.5 of that is payroll. Any, any comments from board members or questions? Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
Rocco?
None.
Mr. Baraski?
No questions.
All right. We actually have, we pulled a part of this bill list out. $7,000 payment to Car and Duff Electric, because that's Mr. Baraski's employer. Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
That is correct. So Mr. Baraski will be abstaining for that reason.
Okay. Is there a motion then to pay the bills?
Salute.
Second it.
All right. I'm sorry again. How are we doing this, Mr. Clark? We're voting on both bill lists now?
We're just, we're gonna vote on them as two separate votes. The first is everything but the Car and Duff bill. And then the second, then take a second vote for the Car and Duff bill.
Okay, Mr. Galloway, or Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board? I'm sorry.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
I'll stick to the second bill list. $10,060. Is there a motion to pay that bill?
Salute.
Second it.
All right. Mr. Rocco?
Sir, Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Same.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right. We're good, Mr. Clark?
We're good.
All right. That takes us to item 13. Lieutenant Chief Whitney, I'm sorry, Chief, wait on that police report.
We're still getting used to it in my house as well. All right. Let me just share my screen. Okay, good evening, gentlemen. This is the monthly report for October into November. As has been the practice, we look back to the prior month. So in October this year, we were at minimum staffing 55% of the time. That's up slightly from September, but kind of down from this month and prior years. We seem to hover somewhere between 60 and 70%. The 2016 figure was higher because our deployment was different then. That's the individual breakdown per squad. So you can see Group B days was fully staffed the entire month. So you can see Group B days was fully staffed the entire month. Um, the rest of the squads had, uh, obviously higher percentages of being at minimum staffing. The most was on Group A day shift. Just a reminder about our objectives. Um, we feel we can hit the ball out of the park when we meet this objective. We try not to be at minimum staffing above twenty-five percent of the time. The overdoses for the month of October, uh, sadly, uh, we had another fatal overdose, which brings the year total to seven. Uh, that's seven out of a hundred and eleven overdoses so far year-to-date. When you look at the historical figures, the last time we had seven fatal overdoses, um, was back in twenty-ten. And that was seven out of thirty-three back then. So you can see that those things are changing, uh, in terms of the number of fatal overdoses. Uh, the number of total overdoses is still high, uh, certainly much higher than it was ten years ago. This remains something that we continue to, uh, deal with on a daily basis.
Are they all, is it all heroin? Do you know?
Uh, the majority of these overdoses are heroin. Uh, we don't get too many overdoses on stimulants where people lose consciousness. It does happen. Um, but the majority of these overdoses that, um, are killing people are still heroin-related. Um.
Right. Thank you, chief.
Chief, are a lot of these, um, overdoses, are they in residential areas or are they in like, uh, uh, motels or mass transit areas?
They're truly all over the township. Uh, they're, they're in our residential areas. Uh, we certainly get them in our hotels. We get them in, uh, the bathrooms of, of convenience stores and other, uh, stores. Uh, we get them in cars driving down the road. Um, we, we continue to respond to overdoses in just about every place you can imagine that people are. Um, you know, it's just, it, it remains a constant challenge. I always touch on this when we talk about this. Um, we are seeing more and more methamphetamine use. Uh, today, the day shift was out there. They were very busy. They had some guy driving like a maniac on Lincoln Highway. And when they caught him, he was a guy from Philadelphia, you know, meth out of his head, uh, just, just driving like a crazy person. Uh, we, we do see more and more methamphetamine. Uh, and, and that is undoubtedly contributing to these numbers. I, I truly believe though, everybody's doing a fantastic job saving lives. It's undoubtedly a, a shift in the drug of choice from a depressant-like, uh, heroin to a stimulant that is, um, ironically keeping more people from dying. The flip side of that is, though, and I always try to mention this, use of force incidents will go up, um, when the drug of choice becomes a stimulant. It makes people more apt to be violent, and it's much more likely to result in episodes of excited delirium. Um, our calls for service for October. So we're, we're kind of back to pre-COVID-like levels in, in a lot of these areas. Um, fifteen sixty-six is a pretty decent, um, call volume. We break the calls down into sectors, which are patrol areas in the township. I don't want to bore you with a lot of administrative details, but the goal in a sector plan is to even out the workflow. And if you look at this, you can see every month, it, it really isn't an even workflow. So we're doing a resource allocation study to determine if we should redraw our sector grid to try to make that work, um, division among the officers that are working a little more even. Uh, so that's something that I hope to change next year. Our crashes, our crashes are definitely up to pre-COVID levels. A hundred seventeen crashes for the month, uh, thirty-three of which were reportable. Uh, brings our year-to-date accidents up to eight hundred and eighteen. So people are crashing into each other all over the place like they normally do, sadly. Arrest levels, arrests are up as well. You can see thirty-nine out of the eighty-five arrests were drug arrests, and out of that fourteen, I could bet you the majority are, that are pending are drug-related arrests. Uh, that remains, like I said, a, um, a problem that we, we try to address, uh, every day. Uh, it just continues to be one of the priorities for, for the police department in the community. Our hotel, hotel and motel breakdown, excuse me, uh, you could see the red roof is still leading the charge on calls for service. Uh, we're in there all the time.
Is there anything we could do to, to change that?
You know, we hit it pretty hard in terms of being proactive. Um, the red roof is no longer corporately owned. They're local owners, so there really isn't a corporate office we can go to. Uh, we did make suggestions to them of certain, uh, procedures that they could implement that are designed to try to fight some of the problems you get when you have kind of a budget motel, uh, issue, which COVID has driven the rates down. So that's what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with a different clientele, uh, because it's cheaper. Uh, they have not implemented all of them. You know, we can't force them to. Um, but we continue to try to help them as much as we can, uh, in dealing with this problem. Uh, I would say that, um, they could do a little bit more on their end.
Chief, what are the majority of these calls for?
Uh, they're disorderly subjects. They're wanted people. Uh, there are disputes and fights, uh, and drug complaints. That's, that's the kind of calls we're getting there. You know, mental health calls. You know, the, the stress level on the planet is up, but the stress level in the community obviously is up, you know, with everything that's been going on with this pandemic. So, you know, we see, uh, every population we deal with has an elevated stress level. A lot of these calls, a lot of the people that were already struggling with mental health issues are really struggling now. Uh, so we have a lot of co-occurring mental health and drug issues. Uh, that, that's pretty common. So those, that gives you a flavor for the kind of calls we typically see up there. Uh, we updated our arrest data to include arrests through the end of October. Um, so again, when we look at our, our demographics, um, you know, our arrest rate, the, the vast majority of people we arrest are Caucasian. The vast majority of people who live in Falls Township are Caucasian. Uh, these things don't match exactly, and I always say if they matched exactly, you'd think we were cooking our books. Um, you know, these are the honest figures. Um, so, you know, this does not indicate to me that we have any issues with bias-based policing. Uh, just to kind of keep me in the loop, I talked a little bit about the, the violence level, the stress level and the violence level, I think, kind of coincide. There's been an increase, um, in violence in, in the community. Uh, we had a shots fired call that was reported late. Now, why they didn't call us in the middle of the night, I don't know. Um, but they called the next morning and said, hey, I thought I heard shots fired the next, uh, last night. Uh, we came out there and sure enough, there are, uh, brass casings from a forty-five caliber handgun, uh, expended. So there was some kind of shooting there. Um, I'm assuming there was no hit because nobody called. Um, but we did have that, um, back on October twenty-ninth. And then, of course, we had on November seventh, um, shooting at the Wawa on West Trenton Avenue. Uh, this was a instance where two people who had handguns were chasing a, a third person, firing at that person, uh, firing at the vehicle as it left the scene. They ran through the Wawa and pushed a medic out of the way. It was , uh, absolutely a complete disregard for anybody's safety. Uh, this is an active investigation. Uh, it's being aggressively pursued. Uh, obviously, these are two individuals that we want to, uh, to bring to justice. Miracle, nobody was, was shot there. Um, and just to take, uh, so you know, to circle back, we talked in September about that shooting at North Olds Boulevard and Lincoln Highway. This was an ongoing dispute between two people. They were actually both armed. Um, the one guy got the shot off before the other guy. Um, and, and we arrested two people in that. So that case did close, uh, with the rest of the two individuals that were involved. Uh, still waiting to hear in this grant. I'm hoping to hear this week. Uh, this is the, uh, certified recovery specialist that we would be putting out with our police EMTs, uh, if we get the grant. I'd like to train the certified recovery specialist as an EMT. Nobody's done that before. That'd be kind of neat. I'll make them into a first responder. Um, it's a great grant. I've had a lot of support from BCDAC. They, they really did all the heavy lifting. We're just waiting to hear whether we, uh, we receive that grant or not. So hopefully, fingers crossed. Uh, just to give you guys a heads up, so there, obviously, the police use of force is a big issue in the United States. Uh, our District Attorney's Office and our Bucks County Chiefs of Police Association kind of got together and worked on fifteen policy points that they felt the thirty-nine police departments in Bucks County, um, could adopt in their own individual policies, uh, to, to address things that we've all talked about before. These are things like, uh, de-escalation, like duty to intervene, uh, like, like duty to render medical care to someone who we use for some, stuff that we do here all the time. Um, but to officially, as a county, uh, adopt this and be able to say to the entire county population that, uh, you know, we're adopting these points to, to make it safer for everybody and to, uh, meet the, uh, standards that have come out, that are new Pli Act standards for accreditation, and, um, that, that in some senses are being legislated in different states throughout the country. So Falls Township has agreed to, to jump on that and amend our use of force policy. Uh, many of those things were already contained in the draft of the revision we had going anyway. Um, but we've, uh, we've committed to sign on with everybody else to, to address that. And, uh, there's press conference on Wednesday morning at eleven forty-five, uh, where a bunch of, uh, police departments and the district attorney are gonna discuss that on the courthouse steps. So I just wanted to let you guys know that was coming. And finally, just to reassure everybody, um, you know, we started out the year not expecting to be in an unprecedented global crisis. Um, but, uh, you know, we all work together as, as the township, and we've been training and purchased personal protective equipment since this thing started. Um, knock on wood, you know, we're in a much better place now to deal with this surge. And if next year a second wave takes place, uh, we will continue to provide police services to the community. When people need us, uh, we'll be there. Uh, just to reassure everybody that, you know, there, there'll be no, uh, disruption of continuity of operations. When people need us, we'll be there.
That's all I have.
Excellent presentation. Any questions for Chief Whitney? Mr. Palmer?
No. Thank you for the report.
Gallaway?
No, thanks, chief.
Anything for asking?
Uh, thanks, chief. And also thank you for following up with the, um, North Olds and Lincoln Highway incident. And I know I asked about that, I think it was last month, possibly, um, but I appreciate you following back.
No problem. Hopefully I'll have more good news soon.
Mr. Rocco?
Uh, just, you know, thank you. It was very informative, um, and, and helpful. So thanks.
Yeah, I think, I agree. Just like what everyone else said, excellent job. Chief Whitney. All right. Do we have to accept that report? We don't accept that report, right, Ms. Gallagher?
No.
That takes us to manager comment. Mr. Tequita, your turn. There you are.
I have a couple items. Uh, the first one is a request to authorize advertisement of a rental property inspection ordinance. We are working with the attorneys to prepare an ordinance which would create a residential rental license and inspection program. Program would require registration with the township and implement inspections every three years for each rental unit in the township to ensure that properties are compliant with code requirements. Prior to the meeting, uh, to schedule this ordinance or to consider the ordinance, the township will be contacting, uh, property owners of various apartment complexes and rental units to review the proposed ordinance with them. All right. This, this is just a request to authorize advertisement of that ordinance.
All right. Any questions or comments? From board members? Or are we just gonna vote to authorize this?
No questions.
All right. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. Second item I have is a, um, the, the board is being asked to consider an escrow release for MM Metals USA in the amount of three hundred and three thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. That has been determined, uh, it has been determined by the engineer that they are, uh, in compliance with this release.
All right. I guess there's any questions? This is pretty straightforward. Is there a motion to, for the escrow release?
So moved. Second.
All right. Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
The last item I have is, uh, the MyLars and Developers Agreement for, uh, Alro Steel, um, are, are ready for signature and they're in the township building.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to board comment. Mr. Palmer?
Um, I'm glad to see the road program going good. The budget seems to be in line for next year. And, uh, I was happy to see the dedication of the day of the Doughboy, uh, the, Mr. Dent and, uh, Mr. Harvey over there. Uh, other than that, everybody stay safe and enjoy their Thanksgiving.
Ms. Gallaway?
I just hope everyone enjoys their holiday. Thank you.
Mr. Baraski?
No comment.
Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, thank you, Mr. Dent, for attending the Doughboy. Um, it was in the middle of the day. It's hard for us to get to. So thank you. Um, now, just secondly, on the budget, um, I, I mean, I think roughly it's costing us twenty million a year to keep the lights on. So, um, without the landfill, that, that's gonna be a struggle. So, um, different tax, different ways to get revenue is, is gonna come upon us at some point, you know, maybe five, ten years, but it's, it's coming. So, uh, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you. Just to echo what everyone else said, wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Everyone stay safe and healthy. The, um, this pandemic stuff is starting to get a little crazy again. You know, I saw Philadelphia is taking measures. That's not a decision that we make here in Falls Township, but if everyone can just use their good judgment and be considerate of everyone else and just do your best to stay safe. It's a crazy time. I guess that's it. Oh, we do have a, we are gonna have a special meeting. Someone mentioned the North Point Development Group. That's the company that's purchasing the US Steel site. And we are gonna have a special meeting on December seventh at six PM, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, six PM. I think that's where we decided.
Yeah.
Everybody.
And that's the only thing we're gonna be doing that night is, you know, hearing a presentation from them, maybe taking, uh, making a move to, um, approve their Developers' Agreement. And other than that, that's all we have for tonight. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Good night, all.
Night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
There, it's a wrap.
Man, everybody's getting out of here as fast as they can.
Hey, I just talked to, uh,